We've now called to order the Muskogee Municipal Authority Meeting for September 13th, 2021. Our invocation tonight will be by Councilor Tracy McGee, followed by the flag salute. Let us stand.
Let us bow our hearts to a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, Yon where we thank you. Thank you for your grace and your mercy. Father calls us to understand as we move forward to do the business. Give us one mind to focus on your goodness, your grace, and your mercy. Let us all say hallelujah.
Let us turn to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Morgan.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Thank you. Item number one.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of August 9th, 2021, or take other necessary action.
Do we have any questions or corrections regarding the minutes or a motion to approve?
No for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending August 31st, 2021, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, members of the authority, you do have the claims for the month before you. We do recommend approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from the council regarding the claims?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, item passes. That will conclude the meeting of the Muskogee Municipal Authority. We will now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee City Council for September 13th, 2021. We will consider the approval of the minutes of the special call city council meeting for August 16th, and the emergency call meeting for August 16th, and city council regular session for August 23rd, or take other necessary action. Do we have any corrections for any of those minutes or a motion to approve?
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second on those minutes. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, item passes. Before we go into the regular agenda tonight, let me say to the council that we did not have our regular committee meetings. If there are any of these agenda items that are requiring more action or attention, or require more questions, certainly, we are happy to have those items discussed again on committee to give us more time to evaluate and assess each of them. Item number one.
Receive report on status of COVID-19 in Muskogee and take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, as you're aware, there's a lot going on in our community related to COVID-19. One thing I want to touch on briefly before Mr. Evans gives you a more detailed update. We are aware that President Biden has said, announced that there are going to be rules affecting employers of more than 100 employees, which the city is. There's some doubt as to whether that would apply directly to the city or not. What I would just want to say today, just to make sure that it's clear, is there's no new rules that are affecting our workplace as of right now regarding vaccinations and mandatory testing. That may come down the road, and we'll follow whatever guidelines are set out for us, but right now there's not been any change. That being said, I want to make sure Mr. Evans has an opportunity to update you more fully on the status of COVID-19 in our community.
Mr. Evans.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. In front of you should have your quick fact sheet, COVID sheet I put together. The city of Muskogee, as of last Wednesday on the 8th, had 364 active cases and 156 deaths. This has added seven additional deaths to the city of Muskogee from the previous week. From the chart there, you can tell about two months ago, from July 7th, we had 20 active cases. Like I say, as of last Wednesday, we had 364. However, this is down slightly from the previous week, and we hope to see that trend continue downwards. As of September 6th, Muskogee County is still in the orange category on the risk level. From the Oklahoma Department of Health, we're currently at 71.4 cases per 100,000. According to the weekly epidemiology report, 208 deaths were reported in the week, August 29th through September 4th. Some of the good news is in the vaccine data for Muskogee County. In Muskogee County, 47.8% of citizens over the age of 12 have been fully vaccinated. 61.1% have received at least one dose. The 65 and up age group is doing extremely well with 77% fully vaccinated, and at least 90.6% have received one dose. So we continue to see those numbers going up here in Muskogee County. According to the epidemiology report, as of September 6th, for the prior 30 days on the hospitalization data, there have been 3,079 hospitalizations. Out of the 3,079, 2,891 were unvaccinated, or 93.89%. For the age group 18 through 35, 385 hospitalizations occurred. 381 of those were 98.9, almost 99%, were unvaccinated that had to go to the hospital. For the age group 36 through 49, 565, with 98.4% being unvaccinated. As of this morning, there are no available ICU beds in the state, and approximately 250 emergency department holds waiting on a bed. So the hospital status is still not a real great one at the moment. We continue watching that on a daily basis. Going through some of the pages, page 2 there, you see our city of Muskogee active cases chart we have. There's that slight dip downward trend that I talked about. That is also reflective in the graph later on at the state, so we hope that that is something that we're going to see occurring. At least statewide is a trend downward. If you flip over to page 4, it says COVID-19 vaccine breakthrough infections in Oklahoma. The state is doing a really good job of tracking the number of vaccines by brand that's given out, the number of vaccines, and they're also tracking the breakthrough cases. As you can tell, all of the vaccines, whether it be Johnson &amp; Johnson, Moderna, or Pfizer, have a less than 1% breakthrough case. And what I mean by breakthrough, they're describing as an individual that gets a COVID-19 positive test back, and they have documentation of receiving the vaccine. That meets the definition of fully vaccinated. So the data from the state is showing that the number of people coming back with a positive test after getting a vaccine is very low. We're seeing Moderna at .33% and Pfizer at .46%. On the following pages are some more hospitalization data. Pages 6 and 7 has our cases and deaths charts. We're still seeing quite a few people having to go to the emergency department for flu-like symptoms, COVID-related symptoms. But on page 8 says COVID-19-related emergency department visits. There's that dip down, that trend line that looks, hopefully, we've got our fingers crossed that we're maybe on the backside of this, or at least seeing some good news for a little bit. On the following page is Oklahoma excess death analysis. We are seeing quite a few excess deaths over the last month, couple of months back through July. And on the very last page is something that Mr. Miller had briefly talked about, is President Biden's latest vaccine mandates. This came from the White House's website. It's just some bullet points on his plan on the mandates moving forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Evans?
I have a question. I don't know if you can answer this, Tyler, or Mr. Miller. I'm concerned, Mr. Miller, you reported a couple of weeks ago, in, two Fridays ago, in your Friday report about the status of the school system. And I just kind of feel that the community deserves to, you know, are we doing good? Are we doing bad? Your report put the number somewhere around 250, whereas on the 3rd, on the 8th, and on the 13th are the only time that the school system is reporting any cases in the schools, and they're in the 40 and 50 range. And I want to know, you know,
So I'll touch on that.
Where do we get that data from? And, you know, is there anything from emergency management that we can do to be more transparent when it comes to even cases in the schools?
Sure. So I can touch on that number a little bit. So the number I provided there was possible students in quarantine. There's a different number that you're referring to. It comes from Muskogee Public Schools' website. They look like they're a pretty good job of tracking that on Excel spreadsheet, the number of staff, number of support personnel, number of kids. But if you look at that closely, it's positive cases in quarantine. So I think I looked a little bit earlier. I think we're in the 50s on the positive cases. So obviously, that affects a little bit more. If you have a positive case in a class, you may have some more that's going to have to be in quarantine, right, for an exposure? So that number that I was given wasn't an official number that was published. That was, that came through me from some of my sources that I have here in the community. We are watching that number that Muskogee Public Schools produces there on their website for positive cases. But like I say, that does not really take into effect the complete quarantine situation of all the students that could be affected. So that was kind of the difference between the 40 number and the 250 number, was quarantine versus positive.
Okay. I, you know, just wish that we could be transparent, you know.
Right.
We deserve to know. It's a painful, you know, information to receive, but I think that, you know, what we don't know will hurt us.
Yeah. And I'll reach out to the school districts. I'll reference some of that data here in the reports moving forward, but I'll also reach out to our contacts in the school system to see if they're willing to provide me with any more data than what's available.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion for Mr. Evans?
Mayor, we recognize.
Yes, Mr. Van.
I'm looking at these deaths, 156 here in Muskogee. You know, Tyler, everything is full. Hospitals are full. Back in 2020, you know, we fought and fought with masks. You know, I'm looking at right now, the situation here in Muskogee and around the world. COVID and Delta virus, and this got this other virus, is real. And people will still not put this on, this mask on. I'm looking in this room right now. I put this mask on to protect you, and you put that mask on to protect me. And I appreciate your report because I asked for it, because I wanted to see every week how our city is doing. And we're social distancing up here, so we don't have masks on. People in here don't have masks on. This will take you out of here. This disease will take you out of here. So I appreciate your report, but I think we need to do better. If we go, be a city council, our city, most employees, Mr. Miller, Roy, my, see, Mr. Walker's about there, they're city employees, we should set an example up here on this council and have these masks on our face. I know I'm going to put some slack behind it, but I do not care, because like I say, death is real. And I was so glad when that judge, you know, overruled that governor to put the mask in the school. Oh, I was happy, because I'd have told him if I could have went to the Capitol myself. And I did, you know, when the commissioner came, I told him. Tell me what I said. But we need to do better. You know, we put all these rules, and we need to put some rules in place. I know, you know, most of the people up here are scared to say anything about it. I started to put some on the agenda to try to get a mask mandate, but I said to myself, you can't control grown folks, but like I say, the cemetery is real. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Van. Mr. Miller and Mr. Evans, following up on the visit that we had with the State Commissioner of Health, I'm wondering if we can express some communication to them, because they had mentioned interest in our media campaign that we did about getting vaccinated, and how well that our community had done in terms of getting the messaging out. I think it would be worth it to follow up with him to see if we can offer our assistance to them in any capacity, so that there can be a statewide effort encouraging vaccination. Thank you. Mr. Miller?
That concludes the staff report. We'll be happy to answer any other questions. Otherwise, we are prepared to move forward.
Do we have any other questions from the council? Thank you. Item number two.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4128A, amending the city of Muskogee Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 18, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 3, Building Code and Regulations, Division 2, Building Code, amending Section 18-188, Public Nuisance Review Committee, established and created, to include the provision for a designee to be appointed by the city manager, providing for repealer, severability, and declaring an emergency, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Callahan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council. This is a request to add the language into this committee that would allow for a designee. At the moment, the committee was established in April of 2021, and it does, is the initial point of contact for any complaints or the code enforcement accumulations of weeds, grass, trash, and also dilapidated structures. And at that point, those three committee members decide if it moves forward to the Uniform Building Code Appeals and further action. With only having three committee members, sometimes it's hard to get a quorum. And at this time, we have the building official, the code enforcement supervisor, and the multi-faceted Tyler Evans, as the code enforcement, the community enforcement supervisor, and then he's the... Thank you. So what, we just have the three members. And this does add that if there are more than two of those missing, we don't have a quorum, and action cannot continue. So they would like to have it to where there's a designee in case there are one of those three that are missing, that they can continue the work and get the action taken on the complaints.
We have any questions for Ms. Callahan regarding this item on tonight? Or motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, we will now entertain a motion to declare an emergency.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any other questions regarding the emergency? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number three.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4132A, amending Chapter 22, Business Regulations, adding Article 17, Commercial Film Regulations, adding Section 22-680 Definitions, adding Section 22-681, General Requirements, adding 22-682, Permit Denial and Appeal, adding 22-683, Permit Violation and Appeal, providing for repealer, severability, and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Members of the council, in recent legislative action by our state, the state was influential in increasing the state film industry budget upwards of $30 million. And we need to be in a situation as a community where if those funds become available, that we have access to them as a smaller city. I think Jordan Jorgensen from our tourism staff is here to speak to that item. If not, Mr. Tucker is adequately prepared to share that information. Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mayor. When I did speak with Jordan, she indicated she would be here, so I'm not sure what happened. But this was made as a result of some conversations that she had had with the Cherokee Nation as a result of their film commission. In order to qualify as a preferred city, you do have to have an ordinance on the books that does require a permit. If you have that, then you can get on a list for the Cherokee Nation for a preferred city. And that would give you first access once a film production company reaches out and says, "Hey, we're looking to film," and, you know, who do you suggest that you do that? And so the tourism office will serve as our film office pursuant to that regulation. But Mr. Beasy is going to go through the requirements of the ordinance, and then we will put it to you for further discussion. But this was not intended to be in any way restrictive, but was rather intended to be brought forward to qualify us for those additional dollars and to be a city where we can be recommended as a preferred city for filming.
Mr. Beasy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What we have in this is, just like anything else we do, we try to keep our citizens in the forefront of our thoughts. Filming, whether it be a large, major motion picture or a small independent film, can have an impact on the community, health, safety, welfare, lighting, sound, noise, a general impact. So when we began to craft this motion, or this ordinance, what we tried to look at was how we could best minimize those impacts while facilitating, being an open community, just like we've done with many things, to be as inviting as we can to new businesses and new opportunities. So as we did this, instead of starting from scratch, we looked at places that have been very active in filming. One, we looked at California, the film institutes, municipalities out there, who deal with filming on almost a daily basis. We also looked at Georgia. They have a number of communities, because Georgia has been very active in recruiting and having films in their state, much as we are trying to do now. So we took some of that, and then we ultimately came up with something that we thought fit our community best. So if you look at this, the first thing I will say is this isn't a blanket. Anyone who films has to have the permit. The one thing we do is specifically exempt student films and personal films. If it's a family thing, if you're out shooting videos of your family and your kids in the park, this has nothing to do with that. This is a commercial filming enterprise. That's what that permit relies to. So in general, we look at, this only applies to people using public property. If they make an arrangement with private property to have that done, that's different. They deal with the private property owner independently, and we specifically say in here, even if we grant a permit, we will not intervene and we will not interfere if they need to get permission for a private property. Specifically articulated that that is on them, not on us. As we go through here, we look specifically at the manner of the filming. They need to let us know what's going on so we can minimize the impact. Much of the filming that happens has to have roads closed. Potentially can interfere with business, ingress and egress. If it's in neighborhoods, we make it even more specific, and we specifically require them to, as we go through the permitting process, have these permits reviewed by the police, by fire, by any code enforcement officials or any other department which may be impacted, which could include parks or streets, so we have proper oversight by all our departments. We also put it on then that, in addition to application of permit fees, we're going to set fees for any use of city personnel or city property. If they need to use a city building, they're going to pay a lease fee for that. If they're going to have to have police on standby, or if we're going to have to have fire on standby, depending on what's going on, they're going to pay those hourly fees so the city is not incurring additional costs. We're not doing this in order to make a profit. Just like everything else the city does, any of these requirements are going to be at city cost to cover city costs and be as least intrusive and onerous as possible. We specifically articulate that if they're going to be filming within 200, any businesses or residences, just like we do with some other permits, they have to notify those people specifically, because they're going to be the greatest impact. So they're going to have to go and let them know, and if they want to object, then they're going to have the ability to file an objection or refuse to give that consent, or say why they don't think it's in the best interest. Ultimately, this comes down to the city manager's decision within the rules you establish in this ordinance, and the city manager is going to review those applications, review any objections, to determine what we can do to best make this possible with the least impact on our citizens. If it's granted, the city reserves the right to have restrictions put in place if necessary, to limit what they do, to limit the time and the scope of the permit. And then ultimately, our police and fire are going to have the ability to say no to something. If it's ultra-hazardous, if it puts people at risk, if it puts any of our properties at risk, they're going to be able to step in, just like we can through our code enforcement with other things, and take control and make sure that what needs to happen does to protect our citizens and our city. The fees will be established, and the fees are going to ultimately be placed within Schedule A. I'm currently working on regulations. So we are putting a framework together through this ordinance, and then we'll have regulations which can go through the city manager and further flesh out as we realize what our needs are. We're going to have to sit down and look at what the costs are. There were costs from other cities, but we all have to have it relate to what we do. So we're going to come up with those, and if they're not there, we're going to, through the regulations, allow the manager to set what is appropriate, so that, again, the city isn't having to foot money for this. They will put a security deposit, just like if somebody rents the pavilion, or they rent Honor Heights Park. They'll put a security deposit up, so when they leave, it will be just as clean, it will be just as unbroken. And if not, we have that deposit which will help offset any costs. To do that, most of the communities that have filming going on on a regular basis have no problems with this. Sometimes you have more independent films, and they may not be as professional. That's where that would come in, but we want to, again, protect our interests. The last thing I will say that we put in here specifically, which I think is very important, we want to be friendly, we want to do everything we can to encourage filming in the city of Muskogee, but we also want to be acknowledged. And in a few of the different ordinances I reviewed, this was a very consistent thing. End of credits, if you've ever set till the end of the credits, you'll see acknowledgements of people and places that have helped with the filming. They, by applying for the permit, agreed to acknowledge us in their credits for the film.
I'll be bringing it up for one. Okay. And then also, we want to make sure that they don't use city insignias, city personnel, without express permission, because we try to be protective of our image. And so if they do somehow want to use the city of Muskogee as a location, which may involve our personnel, our logos, our insignias, we want to make sure it represents us in the best light, so we have the ability to give specific authorization. So if they receive a permit, that authorization does not automatically come with the permit. That would be a second step, because we want to have closer scrutiny, depending on how we may be held out through whatever type of film it is. Otherwise, this is where we go. Much like we do with many ordinances, this is going to be a learning process. We want to encourage film companies to come here. We want them here. We want them using our streets, our parks, our overall setting, because we are a very attractive area to have these.
So like we do with everything, as we go, we're going to learn, we're going to modify, we're going to change. And as that happens, we'll bring it back to you. If it could be done through just regulation and changing what we do through the city manager's office on permits, we'll do that as well. Happy to answer your question.
The question I have is, where is tourism in the review process? I don't want them just answering the phone. I want to be certain I understand that correctly, that they're actually at the table when it comes to making these decisions in terms of the regulations, what can and can't be done.
That would be up to you. The way we break it right now, since the permit is through the city itself, we put it at the city manager for review.
I'm getting a hammer.
Okay. We do not have them in here as part of the process. They can very easily be placed in, in review, as council would direct.
I'd like that in some form or fashion, because what I want to be certain we do is have our tourism department engaged in a way that they can lend that advice and guidance to be certain that we're not either overreaching or underreaching in terms of the goal that we're trying to achieve. Because this is a great opportunity for Muskogee to actually have that designation, to have access to those funds. Am I clear on how the motion should be, Mr. Tucker? Yes, Mr. Miller?
Mayor, what you're saying reflects practice in general, which is, we have people in areas of expertise that give advice and make sure, when the permitting process comes to me, that I understand what's going on. So I want to anticipate that happening with tourism in this regard.
So, Mr. Tucker, how should my motion be?
Based on what you've said, Mayor, I think it would be approval of the ordinance with the requirement that the tourism office be part of the process for approvals or denials.
That'd be my motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
We have motion, second, and a third. Any other discussion from the council?
And a third.
Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Thank you. Item number four.
Consider approval of amended ordinance number 4127A, amending Chapter 22, Business Regulations, Section 22-677, Commercial Medical Marijuana Growing and/or Processing Facilities, subsection 22-677-1, Modifying the Permitted Zoning Classifications, Providing for repealer, severability, and declaring an emergency, or take other necessary action.
Councilor Whoos.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have some concerns at how any changes in zoning may affect those growers who are in this zoning, commercial zoning or central business district at this time, or those who are trying to develop a business or in the process of that, realizing that many of these businessmen and women have a significant financial investment in this. So my recommendation at this time is to table this to the next council.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker, do we need a motion to table?
Yes, one point of clarification. Dr. Whoos, did you want to table this to the next council, or did you want to refer it to committee next Monday?
Refer it to committee.
So the motion would be to move to refer the proposed ordinance back to committee, which will be the next Public Works meeting on?
20th.
20th.
I'll take Dr. Whoos's recommendation as a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number five.
Consider approval of an amendment to the bylaws of the Muskogee Tourism Authority, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I do have Chairman Daniel Chypkowski from the Muskogee Tourism Authority. I do have Chairman Daniel Chypkowski from the Muskogee Tourism Authority who is here to speak on this item. I will remind the council that about four months ago, there was a directive that the bylaws of the city's trusts be amended to include certain provisions. And so the ROXY has been the first in incorporating those in their bylaws. The reason being is that they were already in a process of reviewing their bylaws. And so with that, I wanted to let you know that I did review them and they did have all that information included. But with that, I would yield the floor to Mr. Chypkowski.
Chairman Chypkowski.
Thank you, Mayor Coleman and council members. As the Chair of the Muskogee Tourism Authority, I'd like to present to you the amended bylaws for the MTA. These have been approved by the entire board. The changes do meet all requirements of the city trust indenture. Changes, some are mere addition of names, subtraction of names. But if there are any questions that you have, rather than me go through each item, take up too much time, I'd be more happy to answer any questions you may have on these amended bylaws.
Thank you, Chairman Chypkowski. Do we have any questions from the council regarding the changes on tonight?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor, before we move in second, I would ask that the motion in second be amended to reflect that there is an additional sentence in Article III which does need to be stricken. The sentence, the beginning of the sentence is there is hereby established an executive committee comprised of the Chair, Vice Chair and Treasurer. So the second sentence, if the past Chair is no longer a trustee, well, past Chair is not part of the executive committee. So that, we're asking that when this is approved, that sentence be struck. The chairman pointed that out to me prior to the meeting, so the MTA board is aware of that. So if the motion would be to approve the bylaws as discussed.
We will entertain a motion and a second as amended.
Yes.
Properly moved and second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos. Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. We will now move to item number six.
Consider approval of resolution number 2872, declaring Quonset Hut identified in the lease dated May 9, 1994, with Union Pacific Railroad Company as audit number 171419, to be surplus to the needs of the city and authorizing the city manager to dispose of the same or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, Mayor and council. This Quonset Hut is directly west of the Public Works Office and it's included in a railroad lease that we've had for many years. This Quonset Hut goes back to the 1970s when Madewell Batteries actually had that lease with the railroad and Madewell Batteries used it for a battery exchange. So that building has been there many, many years. We currently do not have any uses for it. I did put in your packet a copy of the resolution to declare it surplus. I also put in your packet the three pictures that showed what this hut looked like in its condition. And I also put in there an email that is associated with the railroad lease that says that they give us their approval to remove this structure. So we're asking to have it removed and the purpose of it is so that we can create some more parking at Public Works because, as you well know, we shut the environmental control building down and we had to move that department over there and we're having a huge issue with parking. We do recommend approval and I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Do we have any questions from the council or a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion for this item? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number seven.
Consider approval to award bids for mowing projects within the city of Muskogee or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Mayor, if I may.
Mr. Miller.
Introduce this and we'll have Mr. Stewart available for questions. The city council did request bids for mowing of city properties and we did take those bids. Several bidders applied, two were qualified and met the specifications that we needed. And so those are reflected in your packet. You have three attachments that I'll go through with you here shortly. Staff evaluated the bids based on the priority of work as previously identified in discussion with council as well as price of the job as it was bid compared to estimates and recommendations are attached. Again, this was an unbudgeted expense this fiscal year. And so we were trying to get as much done for as little as possible. Outsourcing the recommended areas will allow existing staff to focus on the remaining mowing jobs and best improve the appearance of the city, which is, of course, our goal. So accepting these bids will be approximately $125,000 this fiscal year, but it's really about $265,000 worth of annual mowing. And we originally talked about it, we talked about maybe $100,000, but, and some of you said that's not enough to get done what we need done. It turns out that was absolutely right. So that's why we're going with this larger figure of about $265,000. Doing it this way, the city can evaluate the performance of contractors between now and the time to budget for next fiscal year. And we can budget accordingly because, again, this is an unbudgeted expense this year. A couple of other things before I get to the attachments, I just want you to look at real quickly. We requested to get bids for War Memorial Park and those are included in your packet. Those are forwarded on to the trust for them to consider it a future agenda. We did get bids for fire stations as well. Fire stations are currently mowed in-house, so the city doesn't incur any expense. Staff recommends accepting only the bid for Fire Station 1 because the total bids for all the fire stations were $64,000 to keep them all mowed annually. Fire Station 1 is currently mowed by Community Service and sometimes they're not able to get to it as quickly as we'd like. And so that's one that we'd like to see as part of the packet. So as you look at your three attachments in your packet, the first thing would be basically the recommendations. And so I can go through those, but there are South Main Street, Kalamazoo to Smith Ferry, Peak Boulevard, Highway 69 East through to York Street, I should say. Parking lots on Broadway and a couple of city parking lot areas, Haskell-Median Boulevard, Haskell Boulevard, Medians, around the Health Department near Arline and 34th. City Hall Payment Center, Teen Center and Community Gardens, Tourist Information Center, Fairgrounds, Centennial Trail, Bark Park and Cootie Creek Trail and Elliot Park, as well as Fire Station Number 1. Together, those do total up to about $265,000 a year. So that's your second bit with all the coordinates on there. Those are the bids that we received for all the departments or all the properties that the city has. And the last page is the fire station bids I alluded to earlier. Again, the staff recommendation is that first page with the addition of Fire Station 1. So that is the recommendation that we make as staff. And we certainly have put a lot of effort into it. There are several people here that can address questions that you may have. But I'm going to conclude now and just let you guys ask questions, but we do recommend approval.
Counsel, let me say to us that we have those individuals, as Mr. Miller has referenced, to answer questions. But if you need additional information or review the packet, we're happy to forward this to committee as well. That depends on the pleasure of the committee, the pleasure of the council on tonight. Or a motion to approve.
Can, Mr. Miller, now are we outsourcing all the mowing?
We are not. We are not. Just those that I listed off, if you look at your packet, the very first, the very first thing is it says mowing bids and there's about, I listed off all the ones that we recommend outsourcing. Was, the council gave us some guidance that we did not. We did take bids for all city property, but we did not, the intention that I received from council is not to outsource everyone because that would, that would be damaging to our workforce.
That was what I wanted to make sure that we.
This is not, yes. What this does is allows us to keep our existing workforce, concentrate them on every issue, every property that's not listed in that list that I read off, they can spend more time. So if we have them working on, if we have a contractor working on Elliot Park, then we have more time to work on Robinson Park and Billpool Park and the other parks. Just as a singular example.
So how many bidders did we have total?
We had six. Four of them did not turn in the required documentation that was needed. And so we have two bidders. And that is reflected in that second, the one, the second handout that has numbers on the very far right column, has the name of the two bidders and their dollar amounts that are bid.
Other questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I recognize.
Yes, Mr. Van.
Mr. Miller, on these two bidders, have we gone out and seen what their work requires, I mean, what their work is about and how it looks?
So I will, I'll defer to Jeff Reeves, who are project manager. But I do believe that both of these have references that are acceptable.
Mr. Reeves.
Yes, we did have Parks and Rec and our environmental check on mowing of those contractors. And the prices were verified and they were established that they would do the work that they portrayed. So that's still up in the air as far as them getting out there and mowing it time after time after time. That will have to be established, how they're going to do it and how well they're going to do it. So we have no, on these particular mowings, there's no way to tell exactly how they will perform until they've done the performance.
They're in the business now, correct?
Excuse me?
I said they're in the business mowing right now, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. They're not here, I mean, they're not in the audience, are they?
No.
Well, I'd like to have a list of, you know, you can call them. I'd like to see what they did mow because I want to go out and see for myself what kind of job they do before I say yes or no. Is that just me personally? Because like I said, you know, you can hire people. But like I say, the city, sometimes we make mistakes. We're really not, really double, double checking to see what's going on with these contractors, the way they do the work. And we paying our money out, we want the best and I want the best.
In the bid packet, they did provide references. So, but that can be provided as well.
Okay. Well, like I said, I want to go see what they did exactly, how they cut the grass, how they edged the grass.
Understood.
Because me and Mr. Miller was discussing today, I seen Elliot's Park was on here. And I started with Robinson Park on here because I was very dissatisfied when I went out there earlier and paying the past week or so because it wasn't weed eating around the trees and doing some other things and force edging about the bathrooms and stuff. So I went out there twice and I went out there three times today. So when I, my third time was, the first, well, second time was one of the, I don't know, either temporary employee or what. I can't tell the employees what to do, I'm a councilman. I can have Mr. Miller check into it because one of them got smart with me. I didn't too much care for that. Not when we paying this employee to do a good job. But that's, that's just what happened to me today. But when I was the third time, it's a section they haven't cut. So I'm going back tomorrow and see if they're going back after Robinson Park and cut that section. Because like I say, I feel Robinson Park, all of the parks deserve to look nice, edged up and look pretty. Because I will go out and look at it. I don't know about the other councilmen up here, but I'm going. You can count on that. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Van, would you like to make a motion that we table this to committee?
I sure would.
So that we can?
Second.
Mr. Tucker, was that clear?
Yes, referring this back to committee for further action. That's correct. That'll be on the 20th Public Works meeting as well.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council?
So with us continuing to kick the can up the road, what kind of timeframe is this going to put us as far as being able to get mowers on grass?
So Deputy Mayor, I'm glad you asked this. It's on, we put it straight on council because it was the soonest that we could, understanding that usually you like to see things twice. So when, when, when the council chooses to award a bid, if we take it to committee next week and then we would go to council again two weeks from today, after that, we could notify our mowers, our award-winning, the bidders. And then they would be able to begin work after they get a notice to proceed. One of the things I'd like to suggest is that these, we look at these as, as an opportunity for mowing for the next 12 months. And so this time next year, we may be able to bid it again as we get kind of towards the end of mowing season for the following year round. Because we kind of did this towards the end of a mowing season, it may skew how the bids are coming in. So we do suggest that we do this, this again next year.
I'm just saying. We've been trying to get the grass cut off for a long time.
And this is, this is as quick as we could get it to you, sir? We're following our purchasing policies in getting it straight to council.
And Councilman Reed, I'll definitely come by and pick you up and go with me when we go look.
We've been trying to get the grass cut all summer.
But we don't want no person out there cutting the grass halfway. We want it done right. That's just me. I mean, I'm just saying because, you know, a lot of these, I can name one right now, you know, I'll say it anyway. 24th Street, that's a perfect example. Rushing, rushing, rushing. So ain't no sense in rushing on this right here when we should get somebody to know what they're doing and know, can edge and do the proper, make a lawn look pretty and nice. Like we live in a nice neighborhood like Country Club, Honor Heights, all the other additions here in Muskogee, you know, that have nice, pretty yard. I live in Millin Valley, but I kept my yard cut. I'm just saying.
And let me, let me say to the council also that if I receive enough feedback from you individually that you're ready to proceed beyond committee, I also have the option to call a special call next Monday night as well. But as for now, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the bidding. Now, these prices is based upon what period is it? The 33 mows for the season or the 19? Because the season ends when?
Well, there was different time spans. What we should recognize is the bid per mowing, basically. And that's a multiplier. If we started them now, they might get three mowings in or two mowings in. So we would only pay them for the mowings that they have done. So it's, that's what I would focus on, is the bid per mowing.
Thank you.
Further questions? Motion and a second. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
No.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number eight.
Consider approval of purchase of RouteWare from RouteWare Global using the HGAC Cooperative Purchasing Agreement for the sanitation department routes not to exceed an amount of $90,000 or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, as you are aware, we're trying to increase the efficiency in the sanitation department. We've purchased the automated trucks and our employees are getting very familiar with them and they're getting quicker and quicker with them. Now what we're trying to do is establish those routes in a more efficient manner. And I've had Avery Rigney, our safety officer, who has been working with us to try and get the sanitation department workman's comp claims down. And one of his recommendations was going to the one-arm trucks. But he's been working with us also in getting this prepared for RouteWare. He's researched it. He's got a PowerPoint he's going to present to you and then we'll go over the fees and we'll answer questions. So I want to introduce Avery Rigney, which you well know, and he's going to do a PowerPoint for us.
Thank you, Mr. Rigney.
All right, thank you. So, drop it quicker. So first of all, this is a software that will connect the sanitation trucks back to the Public Works Office. So in the trucks, there will be a tablet and there will be a camera on the passenger side of the truck. Then there will be a computer program on the back end that allows the sanitation supervisor or whoever we put in that position to track the routes, help provide support if any routes get behind. So first off, you can see in this picture, this is the camera. This will allow for better customer service verifying that people had their cans out the way they said they did. Whether that be the can was blocked and we didn't pick it up or they didn't have it out in time. This allows our employees to verify that. It takes away the he said, she said from any customer who did not put their can out and says they did. Right here, you can see what the driver sees. When they pull up to a house, they have the option to hit a red or green button. If the can is out properly and able to be picked up, they'll hit that green button. It will take the marker on the GPS over there, change it to a green icon, signifying that it was picked up properly. If they hit the red button, that's because the can was not out properly. That will trigger the camera to automatically take a picture and send it back to the office for verification. It also allows us to keep from skipping people who should be getting their cans picked up and from picking up cans that should not be picked up. So it's run off of the billing list. So it's kind of a built-in auditing system for us. It will also allow routes to be optimized so they can be run as fast as possible. It'll gather data over time. And it allows us to track the trucks throughout the day. And that way, if a truck falls behind, we can provide support to it. It'll also allow us to track landfill trips and ensure our employees are getting their breaks in. We want to make sure they're taking adequate breaks and lunch breaks and their 15-minute breaks throughout the day. The software will also allow communication between the office and the driver without radio traffic. I've got one of those radios in my office. It goes off all day. Sanitation really uses that radio more than anyone else, but it kind of fills up the radio waves with sanitation. Doesn't allow other departments to communicate as effectively. So what this will do is it will pop up a message on the tablet screen that our employee can see from the office. That way, they don't have to use the radio. And then they can call the office with the radio if they have any questions. So it's not going to have a texting and driving issue. It doesn't allow for that. And that concludes my presentation. Does anybody have any questions for me about the functionality of RouteWare? All the pricing stuff will go to Mr. Stewart.
Do we have any questions for our presenter on tonight?
This looks like it would be a great asset for the sanitation department.
Avery, would you add your trip to Broken Arrow?
Oh, yes. I did go take a look at this and Broken Arrow, they've been using it for a couple of years now. So I got to see how it works firsthand from somebody who was not trying to sell it to us. And during the trip, they had to use the customer service aspect of RouteWare. And I was very impressed with their customer service that they have. And I was very impressed with what Broken Arrow showed me. And it comes with a high recommendation from the city of Broken Arrow.
Awesome. Thank you.
Do we have any further questions? The question I have, Mr. Stewart, it may be just generic. What, what fund are we paying for this from?
So this is going to come out of the 212 sanitation funds and we did budget for it. That's the $2.50 that actually comes out of the utility bill and goes directly to that sanitation account to pay for that type of hardware, software, or equipment updates. So, and we're purchasing this with the HGAC Cooperative Agreement, which is the Houston-Galveston area cooperative. And we have used it before. We did run it through legal and finance both to make sure it was appropriate for usage and it is. So I will tell you, that's one thing that we're doing. That's why we didn't bid this item. This is an item that's particularly hard to bid anyway, is this type of a product. We are also looking at, the reason we put that not to exceed $90,000. We are looking at hardware of around $37,790. And then we're looking at services, support fees, installation and all that of another $40,000. And then there is some travel time to get these employees that install the RouteWare down here to put it in. So the first year, it will be not to exceed $90,000, but then it will be a two-year subscription. And that will continue on where we will subscribe for their service and that's going to run us about $40,000 a year. And Mayor, we will put that also into that 212 sanitation account. So very much appreciate the work Avery Rigney did on this and I do recommend approval. This will definitely increase our efficiency. It will also allow us not to have to follow the trash trucks as much because we'll be able to sit in the office and watch it. It will also take that he said, she said aspect out as Avery described to you. So we do think it's a great product and we do recommend approval.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stewart. Do we have any further questions or do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll be recognized.
Yes, Mr. Van.
Mr. Stewart, I like the idea, I mean, the RouteWare, because you know, in the past, people would always call the sanitation department and say, oh, they didn't come by and pick up my trash. Because the people didn't want to get up because they was lazy, didn't want to set the trash can out. But this way, you can tell. But one thing I do have a problem with this is all that, you know, the automatic trucks is supposed to pick them up and dump and put it on their truck. But you got all these bags and all this trash around it where they can't do it sometimes.
We're also working on an idea for that, Mr. Van, and I'll get with Mr. Miller and we're going to, we're going to share some ideas with you in the near future.
Okay. I mean, does it cost extra for someone to have an extra trash can if they got a lot of stuff? You have certain customers.
Mr. Van, hold on one second. We need to have quiet so we can hear Mr. Van properly, please, since he has the floor. Mr. Van, sorry about that.
All right. Like, would you have another, how much does it cost to have an extra trash can? Does more cus, a lot of customers have extra trash than others? Because to me, when you pass them by and you're looking in the community and you got all this stuff, you know, it'll waste. Dogs can get in it and saw all over people's yard. I was just wondering that, you know. Me and Mr. Miller was talking about it also this morning. That was one of his ideas, to give them another trash can. But, you know, and plus, you know, you got these automatic trucks and you still got all these other trucks following them to pick up that excess. I mean, to me, I don't see where that's done any good. I mean, for its labor-wise, yeah. But still for its gas and stuff, them other trucks are still going doing the same route.
We're definitely looking into that, Mr. Van, and that's something we're going to share with you in the very near future. We, we have a plan in the works. We're just not ready to present it at this time.
Okay. I'll turn the floor back over to Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Van. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number nine.
Receive report on the status of the CIP Street Improvement Projects.
Mr. Stewart?
Oh, so we were asked to put together a report on where we are on the 2019 Street Improvement Project. And that's what we labeled it. Of course, this is where we did pass the 0.33% sales tax to rehabilitate and re, not reconstruct, but to rehabilitate a bunch of our city streets. And it's also the one that we're using that foundation match with for the total of the $24 million. So, catch my breath here. So what we've got in front of you is kind of an updated slide of one that we had before that shows how we broke the town into the four zones. And of course, there's actually five with the downtown, but we're mainly talking about the four. And we're currently, if you look to the top right, we're currently working in that northeast zone. And as you can see, we anticipated doing that in the 2021, 2022 season. And that's what we're in. And that was to do the Millin overlay, which is complete. And the micro-surfacing is about 50% complete. They've actually done all the level up on that micro-surfacing in that northeast zone. And in about a week, they're going to start to crack ceiling portion of it. And then as soon as that is concluded, then they're going to come in and do the micro-surfacing. And we still have to do some concrete striping and work on the viaduct, which I'll, I'll go over with you later in this presentation. And as soon as we're finished with that zone, we're going to move to the northwest zone. And by the way, we're already working that northwest zone. Jeff Reeves and myself have been driving those streets out one at a time and that takes some time. Because you have to go up and down them very slow and then get out and look at the streets when you find something that's irregular or in bad shape and, and make a determination of what you're going to do. And then go plug all that back in and make it fit with the money and the distance. So there's a lot of work that goes into it. And as soon as Jeff and I get through with it, we're going to turn it over to David Garner, our street superintendent, let him review it. And then we'll be ready to put it out to bid. We think we're going to be ready in a couple of weeks. But in Public Works, you don't know what tomorrow brings. So we're doing the best we can to move it along. So we do have the other two zones down at the bottom. And as soon as we get that northwest zone wrapped up, we're going to start immediately on that southwest zone. So I want to do some review with you. And that's the centerline miles in each zone. So in Muskogee, we have 310 centerline miles of city street. Now that's all the streets the city is responsible for. That's the local residential, that is the collectors, and that is the arterial. So there's 310 miles of centerline street. Back when we started working this program, we had 1.97 million that we were actually spending on the streets. And I know you guys remember all this, so I'm going to go through it rather quickly. And we did pass for the future that third, that 0.33% sales tax, which was going to bring in 6 million bucks. And of course, that's with the addition of the foundation money. And that's 6 million to be spent per zone for a total of 24 million. So when we were talking about it, the focus really became that, you know, in the past, with the limited funding that we have, we didn't spend a lot of money on the residential streets. And that's why they got in such a bad shape. And that's why we identified this program to really go after the residentials and the residential collectors. So to break it down just a little bit more, there are 230 miles of current residential streets. And we even have it broken down into how many are asphalt and chip seal and how many are concrete. And the average PCI, and that's the Average Payment Condition Index, and this is a 2017 number, that average PCI was 56. And by the way, that 56 is probably pretty average for Oklahoma communities. So, and we did, we did look that up back then when we had that put together. The miles below 60 were 82 and the miles below 45, which are pretty, pretty failing streets, is 48. So what we identified with that money, once that 33% sales tax passed, was what we were going to do with it. And we talked and discussed with council at that time to fix 48 miles in Millin overlay, 29 miles in microseal, six and a half miles on concrete. And we were hoping that after that four-year period and doing all that work, we'd raise that PCI to a 70, which would be a very, very good rating. Collector streets, and the way I always explain it, residential streets, if you live in a residential neighborhood, you usually go out to a collector, which is a 24th Street or a Country Club or something like that. And that collector street will feed into an arterial like an East Side Boulevard, York Street, the Four Lanes, Chandler, Oatmoggy. So the locals feed to the collectors, which feed to the arterials. And, and one of the things we were pointing out is that a lot of the residential streets, even though they're collectors, some of them, there are residences on these collector streets and they need repaired as well. That was the point of that. So this slide just basically breaks down how many miles of that residential collector we were talking about. Overall, we had came here and discussed fixing 100 miles of city streets under this program. So to date, in the northeast zone that we're just about to wrap up, we're up to about 33 miles. Which is, and if you go back to that slide previously, that northeast zone has a lot more streets, miles of streets than the other zone. So we should be just a little bit ahead of that, the 100, if you divide it by 4, is 25. So we should be ahead because of the size of that. So just some reviews of what we fixed over there. North Utah Street, we just put a two-inch overlay on. And I could bring up many, many slides and show you, but for timing, I cut it down. North Virginia Street was a Millin overlay where we'd actually gone in and removed two inches and then put two back. So some of the work that we're fixing to start on over in that northeast zone. One of the projects is going to be concrete repair. And we've been looking at that. And I'm going to jump one slide forward and then come back. The pavement markings in the northeast zone are in bad shape. York Street, Chandler, Oatmoggy, and then we've got all the streets that we just overlaid, such as Country Club. We did some work on Gibson Street, North 41st Street. Those all need to be striped. And the amount of money for striping in that area is greater than the rest of the zones in the city because there's more of that collector in arterial street in that district. And if you've looked at Oatmoggy, York, it definitely needs painted. And also, when you're painting York streets, you've got all those side streets that need to be painted as well. For example, at Haskell Boulevard, at Gibson Street, we have to pave those turning lanes and those markings back. So that's going to require a little bit more of that money than we're going to need in those other zones. So going back, I'm going to remind you that this last year, we did a lot of work in Grandview. And we did it with our own forces. And we're going to do a lot of the work in this area with our own forces this winter as well. We're going to start on it as soon as we can. But Haskell Boulevard is one of them in particular. And we feel like we can do the majority of this work in-house. But when you look on the right side of the screen, that is the intersection of Haskell and Utah. And there's some pretty severe drainage issues going on right there. And we're going to have to do a little contract work with it. So the concrete repair portion of this project is not going to be completely done by the city because we are going to have to put some of the pieces out for some specialty work. So let's talk about the northeast zone that we're currently doing. If you look at the picture on the left side, you can see that the micro-surfacing was bid at $1,592.68. And the Millin overlay, if you'll remember, was a not-to-exceed of 3.5 million. So a total of roughly 5 million bucks. What we have yet to do, what we did was we took 150,000 from each one of those four zones and put it together to pay for the Four Corners project. I'll remind you, that's the way we set that up. So that leaves us $550,000 to work on concrete streets in the northeast area, which is going to be able to get us on Haskell, on Kimberlia. I'm hoping to get on Country Club just before it gets to the signal light there at Shawnee. It's getting very rough. But it's going to allow us to do a lot of repairs on it in that area. Striping, we've got 300,000 set aside. We were setting 100. We got putting, we got to putting them numbers together. And by the way, we're almost ready to bid this. We should get it out this week, probably next week. And we'll get the striping out. And that will, again, stripe York Street. It will stripe Chandler, Oatmoggy, Gibson. And then we're also looking at the potential of putting a traffic signal in where Fire Station Number Five is. With the potential of putting a flashing light in where the firemen can stop traffic on York as it comes out of Fire Station Number Five, which is right there beside the cemetery. So if we can squeeze that in, we're going to try. And keeping it down to that $6 million. And actually, that $6 million is a little bit less because there's debt service that has to go into that. But that's just the round number we've been looking at. So looking ahead, the northeast zone is on the right. Those are kind of known numbers. On the left is the northwest zone. Jeff and I are still putting those numbers together. But again, we're going to try to shoot at that $6 million target. The southwest zone, same thing. We've still got to plug in numbers and we still got to look at that 6 million. And in the southeast zone, if you'll notice, it's got one additional line on there. And that's the Country Club South project that we have, we're out buying right away on right now. That's how we're going to pay for that is out of that zone's money. And to remind you, we already did a lot of work in the southeast zone before this project started. We spent 1.1 million in that southeast zone. So it's going to even out pretty fairly. And it's a lot of work. It's a challenging project to put together. But Jeff and I, along with David Garner and Mr. Miller's help, we're, we're getting it done. Hopefully, we're doing it fast enough for you. But we don't want to go so fast that we, we make the errors. So saying all that, that's my report. And I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Do we have any questions for Mr. Stewart on tonight?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Stewart for bringing his PowerPoint here tonight because, you know, we have Facebook and people are watching us right now. And one thing, when I get on Facebook and look at all the reviews, they always say fix the streets, fix the streets. But these people say it's fix the streets. They ain't sending this audience. So everyone who's out there, listen to me tonight, we fixing the streets. I'll turn the floor back over to Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And my boss and the mayor deserve some credit because they asked to have that report presented.
And let me, let me also say to the council that Mr. Miller and I are also in discussions to determine if there is a way to speed up the process in terms of how the projects are financed. So that we may be able to do more sooner. But we're in discussions to see how that can happen. And as they evolve, certainly we'll bring that for your consideration. Thank you. Item number 10.
Consider approval of amended City Council Policy 3-3-5 Holiday Leave Policy or take other necessary action.
Ms. Swayze?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The holiday policy provides holiday leave benefits for non-union city employees. This revised policy includes the addition of Juneteenth holiday, which is June 19th of each year. As you know, the federal government adopted this federal holiday this summer and the city would like to do so as well. The AFSCME Union has also adopted this in their annual agreement and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Swayze. We will now entertain a motion. Or do we have any questions?
For approval.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman?
Yes, thank you. The item passes. Item number 11.
Consider approval for the Muskogee Police Department to apply for the 2021 Small, Rule, and Tribal Body-Worn Camera Program or take other necessary action.
Chief Teehee, oh, did it again.
He's not here.
Chief Cotton.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The department would like to apply for this grant. This would allow us- This would allow us to supplement our current body camera system and continue to keep our citizens and the police safe, and we recommend approval.
Chief Cotton, tell us about the current condition of the existing cameras.
Well, right now, most of our cameras are starting to get a little bit older, and anything that we can do to keep our camera systems newer, we're wanting to write grants and just get any help we can right now at this time.
And how long will it be before the equipment we have is outdated by the current technology?
Well, right now, technology as we know, it's growing each year, so we're trying to be proactive and continue in getting grants and getting newer equipment, like this grant here will help us. So, I would say probably anywhere from a year to two years, the system that we have right now will start to get, continue to get older.
Thank you. And the reason I ask those questions is because the council needs to consider in future years, expanding our budget authority to be certain that we have our law enforcement with the proper equipment that they need. Thank you, Chief.
I was just going to say, technology continues to, continues to grow, and every time we get something new, it seems like something new is coming out, so we really could use to really apply for this grant to supplement our system as we have it.
Thank you, Chief Cotton. Do we have a motion to proceed?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos. Tracy McGee. Stephanie Morgan. Alex Reynolds. Evelyn Hibbs. Jamie Stout. Ivory Van. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Thank you. Item number twelve.
Consider approval to direct staff to bring forward the necessary documents to facilitate the transfer of the city's economic development program to the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, as well as authorize and direct negotiations respecting any employees who will be transferred to the same, or take other necessary action.
Councilor McGee.
Good evening. I brought this item to the council before, and I would just like to reiterate the purpose and why, and I want this council to know that it just gives us an opportunity to be able to work in such a way with the economic development directly, in the sense that we will have input, as we all know that, how the charter reads, and we're given the opportunity under the MRA to be able to have discussion. Have got with Roy Tucker on some steps necessary for the transfer, and I would like to read those steps to you. Steps to transfer economic development from the city to the MRA. The first step is to approve the contract between the city of Muskogee and the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, providing the MRA to undertake, manage, and operate the city economic development program, establish a start date. Thank you, Roy. This would establish the formal mechanism for MRA, and will handle economic development on the city's behalf. The second step, it creates a task force to prepare the bylaws, establishing the internal management structure of the MRA. This is where you would decide how many employees will be hired, what their jobs would be, salaries, and which will report to the executive director, and which will report directly to the board. The MRA will need formally adopted by the bylaws, and the city as the beneficiary will need to improve them. Step four, determine which employee needs to be transferred from the city to the MRA, and whether they will be contract or direct employees. If they are contract, negotiate and execute a contract and set a start date. If they are direct employees, determine start date and execute a personnel action form. HR has already determined that the employees at the MRA can participate in the city's retirement and health insurance plan. City employees' policies previously adopted by the MRA. The fifth step would amend City Code seventy-four two thirty-seven, recognizing that the MRA will be administering the city economic development program. Step six, pass a city budget, amend transferring economic development fund to the MRA. And the seventh step would to pass the MRA budget amendment accounts for additional revenue. So, those are the steps that it would take to make this happen. Also, have talked with several of you guys, but have also worked with the mayor on, I would say, the organizational structure. Did you want to comment on that, mayor, or you want me to?
One of the things that I'll say, that if we move forward, however we decide to move forward, we want to be certain that the council understands all this is from Councilor McGee's ideals, a suggestion that we streamline whatever we need to in order to be able to advance how we conduct economic development. We basically place the economic development staff and organization directly under the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority. Having said that, I just want to be certain that all of us have had the opportunity to review what's being presented tonight, because as we move forward with economic development, this is something that we want to be as close to unit and enemy as we can, because it's so important to the city, so important our efforts, so important to Councilor McGee's goal, that we be certain that we have the best economic development opportunity for northeast Oklahoma, when we are in an environment where we're so disadvantaged and short-changed by what goes on from other economic developers in the region, so, council.
Thank you. Any council person have any questions?
Is this something that we could table to committee so we have time to review since we just received the information?
I agree. I would still like to have a lunch on it.
And let me say, we can have formal discussions with staff during the week, this week if everyone is available, so that way, we have enough information so that when we come up on Monday, we're ready to do something one way or the other. We can coordinate that schedule through my office.
Mayor, if I could add one other thing, when this comes to committee, I would recommend that we also have, that the item be amended to also allow for the creation and population of a task force. As you will see in reviewing some of these steps, there are things that will need to be decided and worked through, such as the bylaws and negotiations with employees, and so having a committee that's created and authorized to do that will help speed things along at a quicker pace.
Councilor McGee, is that your motion that we move to Monday?
Yeah, we can move to Monday, that'd be fine.
We have a motion from Councilor McGee. Motion and a second. Further discussion? Councilor McGee, thank you for this information as well. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos. Tracy McGee. Stephanie Morgan. Alex Reynolds. Evelyn Hibbs. Jamie Stout. Ivory Van. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. We have several individuals sign up to speak to us on tonight in the general comments section. The first will be Jamie Stout. We ask that you give us your, your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Jamie Stout, three nineteen Kingsway. I just wanted to, an upcoming community event that's going to be held at the Civic Center by Eastside Community Church has brought a group in, it's called Unspoken the Word Tour. It's going to be Sunday evening, September the twenty-sixth. More information and tickets can be purchased, link from their Facebook page.
Thank you, Councilor Stout.
Thank you.
The next individual signed up to speak to us tonight is Mr. Robin Hopkins. I ask that you give, come to the microphone, give us your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Robin Hopkins, I live at forty-one oh four Eagle Crest Drive. Appreciate you letting me speak today. First, I want to thank you and your Public Service Department and Street Department on our ditch, they've been working hard on that, getting it to where it drains to the north. Still not complete, still not fixing the problem, but it's, it's a step forward. We want to touch base on our engineering, people you were going to have doing the engineering on the Cooby Creek floodplain there, and also reiterate on the new addition that's going to be put in there to look at taking that water to the south and having a new entrance for that new addition coming off Hancock to the new Brushwood Estates. That way, they will have an entrance to call their home like we have on ours, so that's the two major things that the citizens at Eagle Crest want to let you know about. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hopkins. The next individual signed up to speak with us tonight is Mr. Keith Bigelow. I ask that you come into the microphone, give us your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Keith Bigelow, I live at forty-two thirteen Eagle Crest. My reason for coming this evening is I'm a new resident to Eagle Crest neighborhood, moved in February, and recently learned of the, the housing addition that's going to be placed immediately behind my home. My two major concerns are quite simple. The short time that I've lived there, I've discovered that when we have a heavy rainstorm, there is a lot of water, enough to where a UPS truck has been, had to be pulled out of the water in a flash flood. We have small children, we have young adults, we have elderly people that live in the neighborhood that enjoy quiet walks up and down the street, elderly people that, we have, I have a new neighbor across the street in her seventies, she drives a small Lexus, and if she has not experienced that flood and was to drive into that, I don't know what would happen. So, my two major concerns that I wanted to share with you, and I wanted to ask you all respectfully, I wanted to respectfully challenge you, and to make sure that you're paying attention to the development that's going in, to make sure everything is done in the correct way with surveys, engineering plans, everything, because flooding is a major issue, my other concern is the increase in traffic. If they build a housing addition behind our home, the only entryway is at the back of our neighborhood to tie on to that street, and you're talking about anywhere from eight to ninety, from eight homes to ninety homes is what I'm hearing, to build over there, and all that traffic coming through our neighborhood is going to put us at risk with a high volume of traffic. So, I'm hoping that as you consider those, those reviews, those plans, that you take into consideration not only the investment that those people will make to have a new neighborhood, consider the investments that we've made to live there and make that our nice, quiet, peaceful homes. It's no different than if someone came in and wanted to do a project behind your home, and it caused flooding and four or five times the amount of traffic, you would be very concerned. So, I'm concerned with that, and so I'm hoping that as you review and concern, as you review and check those plans, that you consider a happy resolution, not only for those that are developing the area, but also for those that live there, particularly if you help, you know, help us figure out a plan with, with an entryway off of Hancock or somewhere else, that gives you the power to oversee that project, to make sure everything is decent and order, and follows the guidelines that's set forth by the city of Muskogee, which you all are in charge of. So, I respectfully ask, challenge, and admonish you all to pay very, very close attention to make sure that all parties involved are satisfied, happy, and safe, and that we can live our lives as Muskogians expect to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bigelow. That was the last resident having signed up to speak to us tonight, item number thirteen.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A, pursuant to Section three oh seven B two, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number Fifty-seven, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B, pursuant to Section three oh seven B four, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss a pending claim or action related to the Twenty-Fourth Street Improvement Project, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. C, pursuant to Section three oh seven C eleven, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss two matters pertaining to economic development within the southwest quadrant of the city, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. D, pursuant to Section three oh seven B one, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the employment and evaluate the performance of city manager Mike Miller, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos. Tracy McGee. Stephanie Morgan. Alex Reynolds. Evelyn Hibbs. Jamie Stout. Ivory Van. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. We're going to ask that all of those who do not need to be in executive session, if you'll excuse yourself from the chambers at this time. Thank you. We will now reconvene from executive session. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Ivory Van. Jamie Stout. Evelyn Hibbs. Alex Reynolds. Stephanie Morgan. Tracy McGee. Tracy Whoos.
Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, mayor, item four, excuse me, thirteen A, pursuant to Section three oh seven B two, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes. The city council did convene an executive session to discuss ongoing negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number Fifty-seven. After being briefed on the status of those negotiations, I believe an appropriate motion would be to authorize an offer in accordance with the terms discussed in executive session.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
Move for approval.
Been properly moved and seconded. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos. Tracy McGee. Stephanie Morgan. Alex Reynolds. Evelyn Hibbs. Jamie Stout. Ivory Van. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
Item thirteen B, pursuant to Section three oh seven B four, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes. Again, the council convened an executive session to discuss the potential claim or action related to the Twenty-Fourth Street Improvement Project. After brief, being briefed on the status of that claim, no action is necessary.
Thank you.
Item thirteen C, pursuant to Section three oh seven C eleven, Title twenty-five, the city council did convene an executive session to discuss two matters pertaining to economic development. On the first matter, an economic development project, I believe an approach, proposed motion should be to move to authorize the termination of an existing lease of city property in the southwest corridor of the city, approve a proposed term sheet outlining the essential terms of a new lease with the developer as presented in executive session, and further to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute said lease with the developer.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Do we have a motion to that effect? Been properly moved and seconded. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos. Tracy McGee. Stephanie Morgan. Alex Reynolds. Evelyn Hibbs. Jamie Stout. Ivory Van. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
On the second matter, which is a housing project, I believe an appropriate motion would be to move forward with negotiations with a developer, of developer, in accordance with the terms discussed in executive session, and once appropriate, direct staff to bring back an economic development agreement for further consideration by the council.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos. Tracy McGee. Stephanie Morgan. Alex Reynolds. Evelyn Hibbs. Jamie Stout. Ivory Van. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Thirteen D, pursuant to Section three oh seven B one, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, the council did convene an executive session to discuss the evaluation of city manager Mike Miller. After discussing said evaluation and obtaining additional information as requested, no action is necessary at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Thank you to the council. We want to say to those of you who have been watching, sometimes in the interest of doing city business, to be great, it takes time. We are grateful for the council having the patience, as well as the staff on tonight. Thank you, we are adjourned.